Recording in progress.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 18th meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Those in the audience and those online, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of bills passed by the county council. It has been our procedure to, if they're all passed unanimously, to just approve all of them. But since one wasn't, we will take each one of these individually. And although one of them was just a technical reason why it didn't get a unanimous reading, and that's our first one. An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-four, seventy-six dash twenty-four, this has to do with the prosecutor. Mister, one member did not vote for it, ostensibly because there was, the petitioner wasn't present. And it's been the past history of the council when the petitioner doesn't appear to roll it over. But the council voted eight to one to go ahead and approve this. Gentlemen, is there any reason why we shouldn't approve bill number eighty-five dash twenty fi- uh, I'm sorry. Ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-four?
Sixty-three twenty-five?
Hmm, not quite sure how that got in there. I'm reading off of what we received.
Ordinance sixty-three twenty-five, bill number eighty-five twenty-five.
Okay. It says an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-four at the top of the paperwork we received from the council, with Mr. Katanzerite voting against.
That's because it's amending that salary ordinance previously.
Ah, gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions or comments on amending that ordinance? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve ordinance sixty-three twenty-five?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next ordinance, amends ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-four, again, establishing salaries and setting the number of employees. This was passed unanimously. If there's no objection, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Next, ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-five. Again, these were corrections or additions to the budget that was passed, and all nine people supported ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-five, which becomes bill eighty-four dash twenty-five. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve sixty-five, though sixty-five twenty-five?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, ordinance sixty-seven dash twenty-five, which becomes bill sixty dash twenty-five. This passed with a five-four vote, and I will note that Mr. Francis asked to speak on this before we vote.
Yes, good morning, Commissioner Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township. Yeah, I, we spoke at the, you know, it was a five-four decision, very close. I think there were quite a, well, several remonstrators at the county council meeting. I want to reiterate what some of the concerns are here as having been the member on a large diverse group of community organizations and others who crafted the current ordinance in place. Recognizing that it, yes, it needs to be updated regularly. It needs to be changed. There's no question about that. Revision is different than a repeal and replace, which is what this is. And I have several concerns, the biggest, the largest of which is, you know, a couple of months ago, you had a lot of people who came out against or removing the affirmative action part of the current ordinance. And I've said this before, and you're well aware, that there was a large concern that that was an important component of tax abatement, that companies reach out and seek qualified candidates of disadvantaged groups. You agreed with those concerns, but you, you allowed that to be taken out. The replacement here is not a replacement in any way, shape, or form. It simply says that the company must comply with federal equal employment law, the opportunity law, and submit a form which they must submit to the Equal Opportunity Office of the federal government to the, to the county economic development team. It does not require any seeking out of recruit, or recruitment of qualified candidates. It does not require any additional efforts in terms of making sure that those folks who tend to get left out are recruited. There's advertisement. They go out and they, they look for those folks to be qualified applicants in their pool of applicants. So this is not a replacement. This is not, you can't put a fig leaf on it to say that it is. And I, I think that that's very important, that those of you who are concerned about those issues recognize that, and I ask that you vote against this. Secondly, local contractors. It's gonna be, well, I, while I applaud the effort to, to look at local contractors, it's going to be very difficult to say that local contractors for the Amazon project, for example, will be half of the value or the cost of the project. It's going to be very difficult also on the Microsoft project, any large project. And it doesn't mean that they're hiring local workers necessarily. There are caveats in this, to the extent possible, where practicable, which makes this clause in there as a minimum requirement almost completely useless because the, you know, it can be determined that it's not practicable for every or any of the ta- large tax abatements that come. I do applaud that it includes smaller businesses. I think that's where the tax abatement ought to be centered. Businesses that are local, that are expanding, yes, give them a tax abatement. Businesses that hire local workers, yes, give them a tax abatement. Small businesses, the source of jobs in this economy, give them a tax abatement. But these overly large tax abatements, I ask you to deny this. Send it back to the council for more work and more community involvement in crafting it. Thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I'm going to start out by saying that I feel strongly about the work that myself and many others in the community put into the tax abatement ordinance as it stood for the past fifteen years, that is, until this summer, when an effort to remove the definition and application of affirmative action was removed from the ordinance successfully. I voted against that measure, but it passed anyway. Now we have a more comprehensive revision of our tax abatement ordinance. It isn't perfect, and I would someday like to see the affirmative action language reintroduced as was originally intended. However, this proposed ordinance does three key things that I do support. Number one, it requires anyone seeking a tax abatement to provide an average salary that is one hundred and twenty-five percent of what the average individual earns in St. Joseph County. That current average for the county is nearly fifty-six thousand dollars. And this new salary requirement in the abatement ordinance would require employers to pay an average of seventy thousand dollars. This is not a luxury wage, but it is a livable one for a family of four in our community. Number two, it requires developers to invest the majority of the construction cost in local companies. This includes contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, transporters, and consultants. And number three, it requires the petitioners to comply with and report on their equal employment opportunity policies and filings. This ensures that our local government and citizens have assurances to those receiving a tax abatement operating on an even playing field and that we have the documentation available to ensure that. And I'd like to add, Mr. Francis, I just don't see at this time, just my personal opinion, I just don't see at this time this ordinance going back to the St. Joe County Council and having a true inclusion of the public like we initially did and coming back with anything better. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Do you wish to add anything? I just wish to remind people that we are not the legislative body that this originated and came back to us. We were told when we voted for the previous ordinance that we would get something, another ordinance back. I share a lot of what Commissioner Morton was saying. I don't think it goes far enough, and I also want to note that we really don't have to have a ordinance. We can defer back to state law, and I don't think that's correct either. I think we should pass this, but add our note to the council that we expect to review this, see how it operates over the next few months. And as Mr. Francis said, it's something that should be reviewed, and I don't disagree. Periodically, we shouldn't let it go on with no review. Having said that, do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve ordinance sixty-seven twenty-five?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, approval of resolution R dash twenty dash C dash twenty-twenty-five, approval of real estate purchase agreement.
Good morning. Terry O'Brien, economic development planner. My office is on the eleventh floor of this building. And before you today is resolution R dash twenty dash C dash two zero two five. It will authorize the Board of Commissioners to enter into a purchase agreement with the property owner to purchase a property at three-two-zero Lincoln Way East in Oziola. At the November twelfth redevelopment commission meeting, they approved resolution two zero two-five dash one-nine with, which authorized funds for the Board of Commissioners to go forward with this purchase. Our staff is recommending going forward with this purchase for two reasons. First reason is that staff was aware that this property was listed for sale with a commercial real estate agent. And secondly, the county and MACOG are presently working to advance a railroad crossing elimination project at this intersection. The average, the price to purchase this property is the average of two appraisals, which came in at six hundred and four thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, gentlemen? I'm glad we're moving ahead with this. There's been tragedy at too many railroad crossings, but especially at this area. And the fact that we're seeking assistance in improving this crossing is important. And this is one more step in the, in the process. Gentlemen, if there's no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve resolution R dash twenty dash C dash twenty-twenty-five?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, this is just an announcement. The Health Department would like to request the closure of our offices for an all-staff winter celebration luncheon on Wednesday, December tenth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. The offices will reopen at one-thirty PM. And we'll make sure that that is posted on the county website as well. Moving on to IPG, ratification of approval of the utility exception request for DES number one-seven-zero-two-eight-three-two, Pierce Road Reconstruction Project.
Good morning. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. What the next two items are, they're letters that are required to be submitted with our federal aid projects when we submit final tracings. One is for our Pierce Road project, which is a Pierce Road reconstruction from New Thirty-One East to Ivy Road, and then the Douglas Bittersweet Roundabout. Both of those will be let in March of next year. And what those ratification letters do is more or less say that we understand that there are utilities that need to be relocated and that if there are any issues with the, any delays due to the utilities getting out of the way, that the county will foot the bill for that. Both of these projects will allow the first few months, well, pretty much maybe the first season, for the utilities to relocate before we get started. So the, we have the utility work plans already in place, and they will be submitted with the final tracings. And the utilities will have plenty of time to get out of the way. We signed these last week because of the due date, hence that's why there's the ratification of each one. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you for adding that.
Yes.
And really, the, the, I don't want to say fault, but the holdup is the utilities, not the county? They didn't.
There's no holdup right now. It's just, if there is, the holdup would be the utilities.
Would be us, with the utilities, excuse me.
Yes, yes, yeah.
But it would be on us, though.
Any, any delays, what that's saying is, would be on us. Is that the correct way to say that, Phil?
That is, and I can tell you in all the times that I've done this type of work with Sky, there's only one time that that's coming into play, and it was not a large issue. So it's, these are regularly done for all of our projects like this.
Yeah, and that's why we give them a first season, more or less, to get, get out of the way. And we will have construction inspection happening during that time also, so we can make sure to push that along.
That makes me a tad less nervous.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to ratify the utility exception request for DES number one-seven-zero-two-eight-three-two, the Pierce Road Reconstruction Project?
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
And as Sky already noted, the same thing for the ratification of approval of utility exception request for number two-one-zero-zero-zero-two-four, Douglas Road at the Bittersweet Roundabout.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, from our Emergency Management Agency Department, approval of a grant application request for hazardous materials emergency preparedness.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Al Kerzitz, Director of the St. Joe County EMA with offices at one-twenty-five South Lafayette, where the door is always open and you're always welcome. What we have here is a proposal to allow us to put in for a twenty-twenty-six hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. This is a federal grant. There is no cost to the county. It's administered by IDHS. We were first told we wouldn't be eligible for this because, if you remember, we had one before. It was very successful. They were very impressed. We graduated twenty-one hazmat techs, which is the highest level to respond to a hazmat incident. And at the last minute, they said, you know what? You guys are eligible for it. So we scrambled, put it together. That's why I sent the email for you. Bill announced in December. Who gets it? We put together a very, very, very good application. It stresses regionalism. It stresses state response. The feds and the state want more of a unified MABUS USAR-type response to hazardous materials incident. This would provide for equipment and training, allows for buy-in or some of these fire departments, our departments throughout the county, to get a skin in the game of getting hazmat techs trained. So wherever there's an incident in St. Joe County, they'll be well-trained to respond with it and with the equipment from the South Bend hazmat team. They had, the north half of the state had its capabilities tested really well back in August when they had that hazmat incident that extended five days down. And I think it opened up a lot of li- eyes around the state. I mean, they even had to bring some firefighters over from Fort Wayne. A lot of the departments in St. Joe County helped support it. But again, the primary focus of this is, will be to secure equipment and to train firefighters and even if there's some civilian employees that need it to the hazmat tech level. And we think this helps St. Joe County because of what's going on through our county and also with the transportation sector, with the toll road and the bypass. We're looking forward to getting a new commodities flow study, which is required next year. We've talked to Director Shalio about that. But again, there's more and more tankers on the road with chemicals, and it's just about us being prepared and ready to respond to it. But we don't know if we got this yet.
And there is no match. There's no reason why we shouldn't go ahead.
No match from us, yeah.
But I know this, looking out in the audience, I see some questions. Tell us a little bit about the incident that occurred back in August.
Yes, it was down at a, like a trucking company, and it had those, if you've ever seen those big metal containers with the big plastic jugs in them, that I'm thinking two-hundred-and-fifty gallons in there or some, they had a mishmash of different chemicals in there. And I'll be honest, I guess some hotshot pilot came up, grabbed it with one of those little tugs that can move them around, and he whipped it, and it flipped, and it caused those chemicals to start mixing inside there and providing a whole lot of nasty chemicals. They actually flew the drone, that drone we purchased from our LEPC committee came in very useful. They were able to fly that in, get a sample, and, but it was very hot. The firefighters trying to go in with the entry suits, it was taking a toll on them, and it lasted. There's probably only one company in the state that was able to help clean that up and mitigate it, but it tested the capabilities. They're still working on the after-action report, but we've had some preliminary information given to us. So that was a major incident, and, you know, they could be minor, major. We want to do them right. We want to be prepared. And hopefully it doesn't happen.
I'm glad you're, this is one, I'm glad you're pursuing this and bringing this to our, the county's attention.
Right. Ironically, we, we have asked continually through the state, can you really provide a good list of the capabilities for hazmat response throughout the state? Some areas say, oh, we have a hazmat team, but they're volunteers. They don't have much, all the technical equipment, you know? We wanted a robust, and then recently, we just got an email that said, what are your capabilities for St. Joe County? So we're pretty strong up here, and this grant will make us a lot stronger. What was the initial reasoning behind them saying that you weren't eligible, then why'd they change their mind? Yeah, because we got that grant, because we had it before. And then also, I had discovered going through, in telegrants through the state, which we've gotten pretty good learning this stuff. I had found what it said was a open fifth quarter report. But with the help of Melissa, we had closed this grant out, paid it all off, and we were done, and then one. So I don't know if that had a little bit, but they assured me that it's all closed out, and then, and they kind of apologized on that end. So I'm not sure. They apologized for telling you you weren't eligible? Yeah, initially, when they said we weren't eligible for it. But again, we're in competition for the entire state. And some of the areas are just taking this money and throwing a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit here. This is working to make a big unified response team when there's a disaster, hazmat disaster. Thank you.
And we'll be working through the South Bend Fire Department and your office, the auditor, will have their site.
Yeah, and you know, we've got a lot of the other area departments in the county excited about this. Mishawaka, St. Joe County Fire, Territoryary, New Carlisle Fire, and Clay Fire.
Kind of interesting that Homeland Security, who has gotten involved in so many things, boiler inspections, elevator inspections.
Yes.
Not saying that's not a good thing, that they're doing that, but, but they don't have more information on emergency management.
Yeah.
Kind of a, a little bit ironic.
Yeah, yeah. I think they're trying to streamline it and make it better, though, so the delivery of services are there.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the grant application request for hazardous materials emergency preparedness?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to PSAP, approval of the premier one hardware upgrade service agreement proposal with Motorola's, Motorola Solutions.
Hello, commissioners. Sal Parisi, St. Joseph County Ninety-One Center, IT manager, located at five-eight-two-six-six Downey Avenue in Mishawaka. So today, I have the Motorola, basically the hardware refresh, which is basically the heart or dispatch operations. So this is, what we're looking to do is replace our CAD servers and our infrastructure hardware at the, the main center here on Downey and the backup center located at seven-oh-one with Sample Street in the South Bend Police Department. These servers are approaching a six-to-seven-year mark, so we're looking to replace those with newer, faster, more capable hardware. Again, this is the, this is the hardware that is, like I said, the dispatch, the heart of our dispatch operations puts out, the dispatches to all of our public safety partners and, and everything else. We're requesting to approve this, this is a twenty-twenty-six capital project. We're requesting to kind of get a pre-approval on this so we can secure the best pricing, discounts, and additional resources and benefits at no additional cost. The discounts you can see in the proposal pricing at one-sixty-three, that's what I kind of was able to get as far as discounts go, and then I was able to secure a seventy-one thousand dollar piece of software for free that we get. In addition to that, and twenty thousand dollars in training, bringing the savings just by doing it this year or starting it this year to over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars savings for the county. In addition to that, you'll see a year one through five maintenance. Because we were signing a new contract, I was able to secure some discounts on that. Currently, we pay a little bit more than that per year for maintenance. We'll save about ten to twenty thousand roughly per year in maintenance that we currently pay. Motorola has agreed to not bill the St. Joseph County Ninety-One Center until after January one, twenty-twenty-six, so we ensure compliance with the twenty-twenty-six capital project requirements. Approval of this will allow Motorola to start begin securing hardware and everything, which currently has some lead time. So it just kind of lets them get the ball rolling. If we can get approval of this, they can start getting hardware, and we won't be billed until after the first of the year. I think this is, pricing is good till December twenty-fifth, so, I mean, the savings are a lot. I think this is, pricing is good till December 25th, so, I mean, the savings are a lot. I mean, you know, I could try to get as much savings as possible, so that's what I was able to do. So, with your approval, we can move forward.
We certainly appreciate your diligence in negotiating the best deal possible.
Wish I can say is no.
It's in your, it's in your budget for next year.
Yes.
It was listed as one of the capital improvement projects that we received. Gentlemen, are there any questions for Sal regarding this?
I have one, just one.
Sure.
Sal, will the training start before we go live then and on the software?
Good question. Yes, it actually happened at the same time. While they're getting servers ready, we have a CAD administrator and another person here that will get training. And then, the good thing is, the new software isn't too different than what we currently use.
Okay.
So, that will, that will help tremendously. But yeah, there will be initial training. The transition will be smooth, smooth and seamless. There might be, again, some downtime while we move from, transition from the old hardware to the new, but that's pretty common. It's actually going to be only about 30 minutes, actually, but, which is pretty impressive. But yeah, as far as training, there shouldn't be any issue. Like I said, a smooth transition and no training for the public safety personnel out in the, out in the field. Anything would be mainly in-house, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Phil, you have reviewed this?
I have.
Oh, and I don't know if there was a, there was a change Teresa had sent it over, so the signature was for you guys. It was originally, originally had this St. Joseph County 911 Center. So, we did change that and updated. That was sent over last night. I don't know if Teresa sent it over this morning, so you guys should have the most updated proposal with lines for you guys to sign.
See, lines for all three of us. Thank you. Gentlemen, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Premier One Hardware Upgrade Service Agreement proposal with Motorola.
Motion to approve. Set it.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sal. Moving on to probate, JJC, approval of service contract with Brenda.
Casa Skavich.
Casa Skavich. Talked to her the other day and still couldn't pronounce it, for the CASA Program Director Training.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Schumaker, the Executive Director for the CASA Program of St. Joseph County. We're located at 1,000 South Michigan Street. So, I am here today to request approval of the service contract with Brenda Matthew Skavich. Brenda will provide some transitional support and assist with grant writing-related activities, and she'll be paid out of the CASA 1213 account. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
It will commence now, but how long will, do you anticipate the training, the assistance to go on?
I wouldn't think it would be, you know, further than the end of next year.
And while it may go on throughout the year, it's limited to eight hours a week, just for the record.
Yes.
Since they have the funds and the CASA program is important.
Whose idea was this to utilize Brenda?
Kind of a collective thing, so Brenda had talked to, or the judge had asked Brenda if she would be willing to come back and do some sort of assisting in training, and so that was talked about before she left.
I think it's a great idea because she did an outstanding job, and her knowledge is invaluable.
It is.
We were invited to attend her retirement party, and I believe the judge, maybe wasn't that particular session with the judge, but he did bring it up with us, that this was a thought.
Yes, it'll be very helpful, because she's, everyone says, well, Brenda did that.
Well, since she helped start the program, I mean, who knows better than the founder?
Correct.
And not to lose that knowledge. Totally. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the service contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, from Physical Assets, specifically Fleet Management, approval of the request to advertise for the 2026 Annual Highway Material Bid. Fuel, Oil, Lubricants, and Miscellaneous Materials. Take team today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bree Roberts, Director of Physical Assets, offices on the seventh floor.
Galen Palatier, Fleet Manager.
Also offices on the seventh floor. So, before you today is a rebid. If you remember, we actually attempted to garner these bids earlier in the year. Unfortunately, all of those bids were rejected, and so this is the second go-around to try to get some responsive bids for these materials, both for fleet, for fuel, as well as the other materials included for IPG and Highway. So, we are requesting to advertise for this bid. Advertisements will take place the 21st of November and the 28th respectively, and then hoping to open on the 9th of December and award shortly thereafter. Any questions? We would be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. This is to go back and, again, it's just a request to advertise, so.
Correct, yep.
It's more or less a technical.
So, why, why were the bids rejected in the first place?
So, there was a number of reasons that they were unresponsive. The, kind of going through those bids was actually more done by Highway, so I don't know if, Adam probably has more details if he wants to. He's trying to hide back there.
The bids we received were incomplete due to missing paperwork or documents that were required to be attached or not attached. Some pricing was also put into the spreadsheets incorrectly.
Specifically by at least one of the bidders put the wrong.
Yes.
The bidders were, was this their first rodeo? I mean.
We had similar results with the 24 bid as well.
I don't get it.
But we had a couple that were acceptable, so we were able to accept those. This one, all bids were deemed unresponsive.
Is there any communication that can happen to ensure that this will not keep happening?
Yes, we are going to adjust the spec to, I guess, basically spell it out, this is what is required.
It's unusual, but not unheard of, that all bids were deemed unresponsive.
Right.
And we just have to go back and do it again? Good question, but do we have a motion to approve the bid request for the St. Joseph County Highway Annual Materials bids?
Motion to approve. Set it.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, Adult Probation, approval of the CSAP Laboratory Contract with Evoqua for Analyzer Equipment Operation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jesse Carlton, St. Joseph County Adult Probation, offices located here on the fourth floor. We are requesting approval for the, with Evoqua. They are the company that does all the water filtration for our analyzer, does require very specific levels and extremely clean water to make sure that we can run that analyzer appropriately. This is just a renewal contract that we deal with annually.
Just for the record, I would note that the, there was a small, relatively small increase of 6.9%. The total bid received was 7,500, $7,557.48. Reason I'm making that is that is well below the threshold for which we have to take additional bids, so.
And this is the company that we have used for several years, and they've always serviced our analyzer, water filtration equipment over the years, upgraded us when needed, so they've always taken care of us very well.
If there be no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve the CSAP Laboratory Contract with Evoqua for Analyzer Equipment Operation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we will move on to public comment for anyone who wishes to speak on any items not on the agenda.
Steve Francis, Judea Lake Drive, Clay Township. Yeah, I'm going to speak twice. I'm trying to maximize my time. I don't come down here every month, so you bear with me. But I do want to talk a little bit about the projects that will be occurring over on the east side of the county. As you know, the Redevelopment Commission just passed a declaratory resolution to expand the AM General Economic Development Area Number Three and TIF all the way up from the river to the toll road, and then from Capitol Avenue all the way over to Beach Road, which is nearly the county line, and then south to Cleveland, and, and taking in a lot of land, much more than the Microsoft Data Center land. So, it's thousands and thousands of acres rather than the thousand acres that was rezoned recently for Microsoft Data Center. I think, for me, number one on the Microsoft Data Center, I know that you will be in negotiations to some extent with Microsoft on a tax abatement, and I would like us to some way, somehow involve the public in that. I know you're hidden, there's NDAs and such, and, and they drive hard bargains, but the public could be involved. I encourage you, and I want to be a productive participant in that in some sense, maybe a survey on what people would like to see in terms of that abatement coming, and in terms of the declaratory and confirmatory resolutions, which are going to move up the chain. You will be in charge of the abatement, I mean, and the negotiations through your officials. I would encourage you to get us a professional negotiation team with these large corporations because they are very large, they have very skilled negotiators, and I don't think that the Amazon example is something that we can have out there. And be advised, I mean, if we're excluded, if the public gets excluded in this process or patted on the head in some way, there's many more people out on the east side that don't want an industrial developed zone from Capitol Avenue to the county, from, you know, the state line down to Mishawaka, and Commissioner Baxmeyer and Commissioner Hazen, those are your districts, and I look forward to working with you on both of those, as well as the people in the area, the particular interest in the Judea, protecting Judea Creek, living on a lake that the creek flows into at times, and at this point, that's only protected by a buffer. So, let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to, is there anybody else in the room who wishes to offer a comment? Let's move on to those online. I believe, Charlotte, your, your hand is up. Ms. Wolf?
Sorry, I couldn't get myself unmuted. I just wanted, I'm Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville, and I would like to ask the county, again, to please reconsider all these data centers. But I also would like to make a remark about Portage Manor. I think that the Portage Manor property is, is a real asset for the community. I might be, I'm very interested in the commission that was talked about at the last county council meeting of a citizen commission. There's some really sort of more advanced ideas that I think the community hasn't really considered. The setting up the school inside the building, I think, is a good idea, and I think that we should have the opportunity to partner with the school on this property, and also with the consideration of generating income on the property through various projects that the commission might come up with and proposals that the commission might come up with. So, just putting that out there for Portage Manor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online wish to offer a comment? Before we go on, just want to note, appreciate your comments regarding Mr. Francis, regarding Microsoft, but I would also note, again, just for the record, we do not have a development agreement yet with them, and the process is proceeding as it has. We haven't had any special meetings, we haven't had any thing, we had the situation arise regarding providing services to that area, and that's still not fully taken, ratified yet, so there's more to come on that. Anyone else wish to offer a comment? If not, do we have a motion to recess?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
We are recessed.
Recording stopped.